Davidson.
Here.
Matamore.
Here.
O'Toole.
Here.
Priscilla.
Here.
Schneider.
Here.
And Moody.
Here.
Okay, I'm on the agenda, intended minutes approval, are there any changes to the agenda, we have a motion to approve the agenda as presented. All right, Derek, you got it.
Chair, if you wouldn't mind, I sent a email this afternoon and I put a little thing there regarding just a support letter. And was wondering if we can add that to the agenda under new business, item six, the Roman numeral that align.
Okay, there.
Oh, so moved.
Second?
Second.
Uh, second, second? Okay, um. Is there a motion to approve the agenda as amended?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Okay, agenda approved with the, with the amendment. Um, okay, approval of meeting minutes. Um, do we have a motion to approve the minutes as presented for the, um, October twenty-third, twenty-twenty-three?
So moved, second.
Okay, second from Jay. Um, it's like we got enough, all those, um, in, uh, in favor of approving, say aye.
Aye, aye.
Aye.
When you vote, say nay. Okay, so minutes approval is approved. That most, most. Um. Next is the minutes for the November twenty-seventh, twenty-twenty-three meeting, is there a motion to approve?
Second.
Yes, Jake, second. Um, all those in favor of approving the, uh, minutes of the November twenty-seventh, twenty-twenty-three meeting, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, say nay. Okay, meetings are, um, minutes are approved. Next item of business, citizen comments of non-agenda related topics, no actual taking, taken, and just so that, uh, apparently the, um, public comment is happening through a webinar, um, as opposed to Zoom. And that will require that whoever is there on screen, I guess, raise their hand and Ryan will let you in, is that how it's gonna work?
Yeah, so it, it's still under Zoom, um, but it gives us a little bit more control over who's actually allowed to make comment. So like if somebody were to make a comment that's way out in that field that has nothing to do with anything, then we could remove it from the grill and hopefully, you know, not get too involved.
Okay, very good, so with that understanding, are there any, any public comments, um, on the floor or on the board? Seeing none, we'll move on to the next item of business, the planning commission and staff reports and comments. Derek, want to fill us in on anything new?
Chair, just, uh, thought I would bring this to the, uh, planning commission, uh, Chairman Moody emailed me the last week, I think, just asking about when the next stormwater, uh, focus, stormwater focus group was gonna be held, they still haven't finalized that next date, so I don't know, I can't provide you that date. I did not hear from him today, so as soon as I know, I'll pass it along to the planning commission. Probably email us if it happens to be at your next meeting or something like that.
Okay, got you.
Yeah.
All right. Just a question. Yeah, yeah, is, is there any other, any comments from your staffs? Okay, so comments amongst the, the commission. Um, we had that stormwater focus group on, uh, December fourteenth last year and, um, Jay and Donald and Tom and I were, were in attendance. So we were heavily represented, um, in that, in that meeting. And, um, I just wanted to give the folks here, the, the intended, if there was anything you guys wanted to say about the focus group, um.
Just, just a comment for the chair and there, I assume the, the person from Tennessee, is she flying in each time to the meeting or is she alone?
I don't think she was traveling.
She's traveling at each turn.
Why?
I, I don't know. Um, but, so she said there would be only three more meetings, that just seemed.
Two or three.
Two or three. Uh, wow, if they're talking about at the upper end spending a hundred and thirty-five million dollars for management control, that seemed like a pretty expedited process, so, uh, Chris was saying that was asking question whether there'd be any impediments to four of us who attended the last meeting to, uh, meet privately to discuss it, or is that, does that fall within the public meetings reg?
You, you, sure, yeah, you four should not be separately.
Oh, we should not, okay, okay.
You should not. Uh, I, as long as you're being very clear at these meetings that you're not representing the planning commission, you know, at the stormwater meeting, you can, but you four cannot be all at the plan, at that stormwater meeting as planning commission members.
So with, um, with Tom being our official representative, then myself and Jake and Donald would be could we say that we're, we're citizens, interested citizens?
Yeah, I think, member Schneider, I think you're there as maybe another capacity is, what's your capacity there, I mean?
Yeah, I, I intended as, um, Eric gave me an invitation that I could tell.
And so, I, I think, I think what you all should just be thoughtful about is expressing why you're there and that you're not there to represent the commission. You've appointed member Matamore to do that, and if you want to attend as citizens, you're, you're okay with that, but, yeah, I want to make it clear, but, and then, yeah, you don't want to have separate conversations, I think that's, I think you're telling that line, that's probably not the best line. You really feel like it needs to be discussed as a commission? You were right here for the public to hear.
Um, well, the, the, um, the discussion, it's focused, the focus spending was, was quite wide ranging. And, um, yeah, it was, it was just the first meeting and probably designed to do that, to, to give an overview of various topics and objectives and, you know, feelings about, about it. Um, but it, 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 it was kind of hard for me to really zero in on, on what to do next and how to be prepared for the next meeting and, and, um, uh, yeah, my feeling was, you know, it would be nice to be, you know, kind of, you know, talk about some things so that my comments were more focused on things that were, were relevant and, and pointed, um, and it would really benefit from a, 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 a discussion in a, in a more informal, you know, where we could, you know, talk for an hour and not waste everybody's time here. Um, so, uh, that, that was sort of my, my feeling and if, and if we could, if we could swing it, you know, or if it's, if it's if the four of us sit over, over coffee and I'm a citizen, Donald's a citizen, Jake is coming from the county and Tom coming from, from the planning commission, would that, would that swing, uh, would, would not cause a problem, or does it seem too heavy-handed?
Chair, I think, here, here's what I would, here's what I would say to that, is if you as member, citizen, member Chris Moody would like to have more poignant comments at the meeting, doing that for yourself is good, right? If you feel like member Matamore as your representative for planning commission needs that direction, that have that conversation at this meeting room as a work session item or some other item in the future, so that he can relay that, because your comments are your comments, his comments are planning commission's comments, and those are two very different things. I would also suggest you do not meet outside of this all four of you, that is, that is, perception is a law. Even if, even if you're represent, even, even being at the meeting kind of is the greatest, but I think you can make that declaration to everybody that's at that meeting while you're there. And I, you are, you are toeing that line of not adhering to the, to public open meeting set.
So can we have, can we call on our own, uh, work session?
Yeah, we could set up a meeting where we can put that on the agenda, then you guys can speak to your parts content and then member Matamore can relay as much or as much as he would like, I mean, and.
It's formal, but yeah, that's what we gotta do, Chris, I'm looking at two engineers who can deal with a lot of this stuff, my concern is the money and I was not pleased with the plans for the money, they basically had no way to fund this. And the methods they came, the four methods they came up with to fund this, three of them were totally impractical. And so, you know, I, I think perhaps a work session and where it can, you know, get the, get the feeling of the planning commission. Just as a general report on it, I thought that the, uh, uh, what they were talking about for zoning and for the planning stuff that affects planning commission directly, we are already doing, we're pretty concerned in this body with drainage, so you don't come in here with a subdivision and, you know, we, we will analyze the drainage situation and we, we really look at that uh, with a, with not a microscope, at least a magnifying glass. And so there's not a lot on the, that is required for zoning changes for, for, uh, for the planners, since we're already in a framework that requires that on new construction. The problem that the city faces is the old systems. And that's, that's where the big money's gonna have to be replacing and repairing. I, as, and road repairs, so. But I would love to get some more input from the other members, if you can, so I, I would like to call for a work session. That's okay for you?
Yeah, sure, you know, whatever facilitates it, you know, because, you know, the, the more that whoever attends the meeting has, has a clear sense of objectives and purpose, um, and focus, it, it's just gonna be a better, a better focused meeting and give you a better place, so. Um, and I, and I think that, you know, the storm, the stormwater thing is incredibly important.
Chair, I mean, your next meeting's on the twenty-second, I think we only have just a couple conditional new items, I think, coming through. And you just want me to put it on for that meeting and you plan, you guys can then have your conversation on that.
Sure.
So we're.
Okay, fine, I'll be.
Okay.
All right, I'll, I'll just get it on there, but on that meeting, okay, so some two, so.
Very good, for now.
Thank you.
Okay, next item of disclosures, ex parte communications, potential benefits of venture.
I have something to note, it doesn't affect my ability to weigh in on it, but, um, the Pilot Hill Parking Lot variance request. Uh, my firm did the SSI review of that, I believe, um, I was not a part of it, um, I didn't, I'm part of it, so.
Okay.
Or what is what?
Very. I don't think you'll be wrong at all. Um. Be current, uh, planning projects, no old business. Um, new business is the acceptance of the resignation, Sharon Pacino from the Larry B. Planning Commission. Derek.
Eric, uh, we just, uh, need a simple notion, accepting her resignation, Sharon had an opportunity to, I think she included in that email that she had sent, so she took that opportunity and will be able to serve on the commission anymore, so, um, for any of the public that are there, uh, there's no public online, but, uh, so being, uh, if you know people, uh, that you think might be, uh, good people to serve on the planning commission, uh, you can fill out the, uh, boards and commissions application, spam on the City of Larry's webpage, you can type in boards and commission application and little search bar, it'll pop up, it's the first thing that pops up, it's easy to do. It's like a two pager, pretty much a one pager really, when you get down to it, but, uh, fairly simple and we'll try to build opposition as soon as we can.
Okay, like say, we vote no on this?
No major.
I'm not sure of the procedure of that, um, I've got to get to the. Sharon, I'm sorry, but you're still on.
Mr. Chair, I would re-accept Sharon's, uh, resignation with many thanks for her service.
It's your second.
Second.
Second from Donald, um, yeah, it's, it's regretful anyways. Um, all those, she should never. There's, um, all those in favor of, uh, think, of accepting her, um, resignation, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Most opposed, you bet. Okay, and so on to the next item, which is Larry Growth Area Plan Support Letter, burdened deans award and comprehensive plan, exactly practical plan. Derek.
Chair, commission, uh, we, we brought this onto this meeting just so that we could maybe turn our application a little bit earlier, um, we've been working on the application for this, it's a American Planning Association Star Award. And it's for small towns and rural planning, and it's really geared towards smaller communities, so like fifty thousand less communities, which fall in a lot different realm of planning nationwide versus when we're talking about someone that's got, you know, three billion people or a large metro area, and so this, this letter is a simple letter that we put together, um, that would come essentially from the commission supporting us, uh, seeking this award nomination through, from the American Planning Association. Uh, just part of the, part of the application process is really all this is. Um, we're just asking if you guys, if, if you're comfortable as a commission, uh, recommending this for approval, um, simply, we're gonna put our name in the hat, see if, see if we're comparable to other communities across the nation by a long range plan, so. It's all this is, doesn't, it's not really consequential one way or the other, I would say, other than helps check boxes in our application.
Is this an approval to the city council or, or to?
We're gonna be bringing a similar letter to the city council for their as well at their next meeting, so.
Okay, so it's basically an, an application process of.
Right, yeah, we filled out an application of supplied materials and they, what the awards committee likes to see is, uh, that the governing bodies agree with the plan, that they feel comparable with what was approved, and what we're doing is, the city's gonna get these letters, the county's working on their own letters for the commission, their planning, so the commission will insert them into the application, essentially, so. Okay, so we just tried to provide a very general support letter, getting on the high points of that plan.
Okay.
Ms. Mother.
Yeah.
If I could, I'd like to say something, I voted against the growth plan because of financial reasons, they were too unclear. I support the plan, I think it's a really good idea and I think it will help. It'll help the city grow in the future and it will provide a direction for it, so I support the plan a hundred percent, I'd like to say. We should apply for that award, a couple more like remarks are.
Okay, are there any, any public comments on this, uh, this growth plan? Seeing none, uh, more, more comments from, uh, the planning commission or, or a motion to?
Do we need a motion?
Yeah, okay.
So moved.
A motion to approve the, um, application support letter, uh, all those in favor, uh, say aye, or no, is, is there a second for the support? Donald supports. Yeah, all those in favor of supporting this application, the support letter, the comprehensive plan, uh, or the Larry Area Growth Plan, um, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all those opposed, say nay. Okay, the motion passes. Take it away, Derek. Anyways, um, so, um, that's all for, um, the Larry Planning Commission, is there a motion to, to adjourn, um, the, this meeting of the Larry Planning Commission, corporate relatives? So moved, second?
Sure.
Second, animals, uh, those in favor of adjourning the commission, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, most say nay. Oh, yeah, adjourn, uh, adjourn and reconvene as the, um, Board of Adjustment.
Okay.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, say nay. Okay, so we are now, um, sitting as Board of Adjustment. Um, and this, this involves, yeah, fine.
Uh, the counselor, come be, has a question, do you want me to have her come in?
Sure.
Okay. He's doing right now.
Hi, Sharon. Sharon, do you have a, a comment to make at this point?
Uh, I was just trying to get Brian, Ryan's attention to let me in the meeting and, um, so that's why I raised my hand, I'd written an email and a message, so anyway, I'm sorry for interrupting. I just wanted, uh, you to know I'm in the meeting.
Oh, okay, all right, so, um, uh, anyone that wants to make testimony during the, um, this, uh, on this variance, uh, topic, um, raise your hand and sort of identify yourself. Okay, and do, um, do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth? Are you? Okay, Sharon, are you on that, on that list as well? Oh, okay.
No.
Okay, so we're, we're all sworn in, um. Derek, you wanna fill us in on, on this, uh, variance, V A R dash twenty-three dash oh-three, Pilot Hill Parking Lot variance request. Derek.
Chair, commission, um, this item for you is a request for a variance related to a parking lot uh, for the Pilot Hill Recreation Area. Um, I am going to briefly start out with, this, this may seem like deja vu to some of you, only a few, not all of you. Um, back in two thousand and two, or twenty-two, sorry, uh, Pilot Hill, we applied for a similar variance. Uh, the variance was to allow for a parking lot for the Pilot Hill Recreation Area. Um, that variance at the time included many of the same things that you're gonna hear me go over, uh, requesting that the parking lot be allowed for a main gravel, uh, to have, uh, common parking areas, parking spots for trailers, fencing, landscaping, some other improvements in that area. And it was subsequently approved by the Board of Adjustment in two thousand and twenty-two, uh, based upon findings of fact that are required for variances for, uh, the Board of Adjustment to consider, and so, um, however, due to the fact that the one-year time limit, uh, that is provided for the variance that expired, site plan applications have been approved and some other things, and so ultimately now changes to the plan, uh, they are back before the Board of Adjustment requesting a variance so that they can uh, move through the process and eventually construct the parking lot that you saw back in twenty-twenty-two, uh, but now a little bit different form, uh, today, twenty-twenty-four, so. Um, what I'm gonna do is kind of go over the general plan and the project, um, once again, this is a park, for a parking lot, uh, this is a parking lot that we would consider not conforming to code. It's located at the eastern end of Willet Drive, on the north side of Willet Drive, uh, if you're familiar with that area, if you kind of go down, there's a cul-de-sac kind of at the very end of Willet Drive. It's just a little bit up the hill from that, it's on, like I said, the north side of Willet Street. Um, this parking lot is intended to provide for, uh, parking for this new recreational, uh, endeavor that the city, the state, the county, uh, pilot league has, has been, has been working on for now quite a few years, and so in the staff report, I provided a little bit of background related to the pilotable project and kind of all the history of that, I'm not gonna go into a ton of that, if you have questions, feel free to ask. Um, also to, uh, Representative Pilot Hill, Sarah Roundhouse is here as well, I'm sure she could answer some of those great historical questions, if yes, that that's part of this discussion, but to really kind of jump into the project, uh, once again, it's for, for the parking lot, it's gonna be six, for about sixty-five vehicles, four oversized bus, or oversized bus vehicle type things and four trailer parking spots. Uh, parking lot trailer, trailhead, who's gonna have interpretive kiosks, seating areas, furnishing, shelter, bike racks, tables, restrooms, antitheater space, as well as signage, um, at the parking lot entrance, um, the site was gonna include a storage, a small storage shed as well, and it's a trash enclosure uh, for, for trash, uh, the parking lot is not gonna be paved, um, it will only have limited paved surface within the area, mostly in sidewalk, uh, sidewalk areas to access the kiosks and some of that things, amenities that I'm gonna say, that are located along the eastern edge of the parking lot. As well as, um, some access down to the street where, uh, the current construction of the street has no sidewalk, uh, sidewalk in that area is very disjointed, the nearest sidewalk is across the street or way almost to thirtieth street, uh, so, uh, not, not existing in that area. Uh, there is going to be within the parking lot, uh, fencing that will provide definition for parking areas and some, uh, dry land landscaping within the interior of the parking lot. Um, the parking lot, uh, perimeter will have landscaping along the west and north sides of the site, but not, um, on the south and east sides of the site. Uh, you'll see in the letter that's provided by the applicant and in the report to preserve access in the space and the usual, uh, site to the actual Pilot Hill area. Um, this property is not, or this, uh, parking lot will not have any type of, you know, curbs or gutters or anything like that to define the area. It's going to use signage to provide for circulation, um, in and around the parking lot. Uh, this property is also located within the offer of protection, open relay zone, so they have to either decide specific investigation, just to get information uh, within the, within the, uh, materials that we provided. In that, probably the, the largest thing associated with that is the hall toilet, uh, that is part of this project. Uh, within that review, uh, there is indication and requirement for monitoring, uh, which has been, uh, worked through with the applicant and through the site and that process will provide monitoring mechanism, which is gonna be the, the feature of monitoring where they'll be able to put something down, actually see if there's seepage, um, and any any issue with the tank, as well as regular maintenance cleaning, which is part of the process of the SSI report as well. Uh, what I think I'm going to now do is point out the, the variance request that is, because I think that that's important in the broad scope of what we're looking at. If you haven't looked at it in the packet as a, as a detailed site plan that shows you kind of what the parking lot's gonna look like, how it's gonna look now, I think that gives you a really good idea of what to expect. But specifically with this variance, it looks like there's a lot of items included in this variance request, because there's actually, you have to come varied from multiple sections of code. Uh, first, parking lot access to circulation, because it doesn't have, because it's on a gravel parking lot, because it doesn't have curbs and gutters, some of the traditional means of proper circulation can't be achieved, so they have to have a variance for that, such as striping. Um, they are providing alternatives such as signage and using fencing and landscaping like boulders and things to, you know, help direct traffic, uh, but it is different. Surfacesing, uh, our codes require that parking lots be, uh, paved or concrete, uh, so it's usually asphalt or concrete. Um, that will not be accommodated in this, we do note though, that there will be a small bit of paving for the ADA parking spaces, uh, as well as the sidewalks and access to the facilities that are in that area. Um, roads joining development, uh, to the sidewalk. Um, roads joining development, uh typical sidewalks will be required in this area. Uh, this is a part of a larger parcel, uh and as I mentioned earlier, sidewalks don't exist in that area, so. Uh, you've not, this, in this, you'll see that the request being made. Landscaping, I'm gonna see landscaping is being provided for the code on the two sides of the site. But on the other two sides of the site, they do not have any landscaping there. Uh, parking lot and perimeter landscaping, very similar uh in in line with that other section about having landscaping on the two sides, about the other. General requirements, uh this is a general parking lot requirements, but just that it's not being, it's not being code, so it has to have a variance from that section. Uh, parking area trees, uh within our standards, we require internal parking, urge, parking lot. Or, let me start over, uh in our code, we require parking lots to have trees internal to the parking area. Uh, they will not have any of those, uh they are providing just some fences and because there's no curves. They really can't protect building and steeping that's with engineers, so they're providing some different boulders and things, which you'll see in the plans that were provided. Um, along the same lines, the internal landscaped area, same thing. Uh, there's a certain amount of landscaping square footage is required internal of the parking lot, which will be provided in this case. Uh, landscape islands, very similar to the last two, uh because you don't have curve together, you don't have islands. So you don't have the central space, so you're not seeing that provided. Um, what's a little bit different is the way in which they do have the fencing and the boulders and things. Uh, there's kind of these pseudo islands being created, but it really doesn't meet the definition of code, so the variance is required there as well. Terminal islands, kind of the last four pieces of all these, um very similar, it's the. Islands that help define the parking area and travel lengths, because they will have, like, they've used fencing to do that. Um, and then curves, uh the parking lot won't have a curve, or won't be paved, so it won't have any curve better. With our review of this, uh these are routed to the city departments uh for review, really no major comments were provided. Um, the, really the largest comments all come through, these are all typically planning-related site design items. Um, overall, when staff reviewed this, like we reviewed during the, during the first review of this variance back in twenty twenty-two, is. This is a very unique situation, uh this is the only state recreation facility like this. Uh, where we have this kind of need for maybe a different standard in terms of uh the parking lot, so. You'll see as we go through kind of the findings of fact, that staff ultimately does recommend approval, uh this was consistent with. The first recommendation that we made in twenty twenty-two, as well as the commission's approval back in twenty-two, twenty-two. Um, I would say that probably this version, I believe, is a lot better version than the version that was presented in twenty-two. Um, a lot of the items that we had noted during our site planning process were cleaned up, um there was some more definition given to the parking areas, with the fencing, the boulders. Uh, better signage, things like that, um and then also the amenities component of this parking lot. Um, just function much better and create more defined space uh that. In the previous one, I just wasn't there because that's not what the, the organization believed they would be able to accomplish through the process, so. Um, because of that fact, because of what we're talking about, this being a, you know, recreation and wildlife management area. We do feel like it is a unique situation, so we believe it does need uh general planning suggested. Um. Because too, uh this isn't a, this isn't a private, this is, you know, a a managed piece of property. Uh, we're talking about a really unique situation, this isn't so business, this isn't a, a park even. Uh, it's managed by the city, it's a, it's a locally managed facility uh for recreation, so. Um, really, under a lot of circumstances, we still don't think that an unpaid parking lot's very compatible, um in this case, we we felt it was. Um, would this, this is a, I'd be under the conditions there is, you know, strict application. Uh, with for uh to provide the applicant a reasonable use. Uh, would you think that it uh allows for reasonable safe use of the property as they proposed? This reducing the parking on the street eliminates any uh, you know. Or, or uh less than desired, you know, traffic activity, U-turns, things like that up the street. Uh, provides for more formal uh parking for our larger facility or. Larger vehicles such as buses and horse trailers, uh I think a lot of times, most people think about Pilot Hill for hiking and biking. But remember, there's also a busting component to this uh uh area, so the ability to safely. You know, have horses, things like that, and properly use the recreation area, it's being accomplished by the traditional parking lot. Um. And it's very similar to what we see in other state managed sites, so uh we think that uh does need to be. Uh, perceived is really not applicable in this case, uh the grant, the minimum, or the adjustment is the minimum necessary. Uh, we think that the proposal here um is good, uh they've included a lot of additional uh requirements and that, trying to meet as much as they could. But just don't move the letter of the law, is really what it comes down to, so. Uh, we do think though that they, they incorporated the things that they should within a parking lot like this, or facility uh like a management area. Recreation like this, so. Um, is this a hard leave with the purposes intent of code? Um, generally, yes, we believe that's the case, uh you know, we find that it's probably gonna be, as this area is increased in users. Um, having this more formal parking area is simply safer, um. Not only for just the general pedestrians, people getting in and off the street, but. Um, for some of these other users, schools, things like that, when buses come in or any of these horse trailers come in. Um. Because it's on the edge of the city, uh this kind of rural feels, kind of similar to what you see in our state parks, uh we feel this. This works pretty well here, uh whereas maybe this was smack in the middle of the city, it might not, um. And then, you know, does this various uh could it alter the essential character of the neighborhood? Who would say no to that, so we think that it, it is fine, the way it's being proposed would meet that general intent. Uh, you know, a more formal parking lot probably still also be appropriate, but this, this uh, this, this parking lot as proposed, we feel, except. Uh. With all variances, we do do public notice and we do post it in the property, uh through today, we have received no public comments regarding this proposal. Um, when we, when we did the original proposal back in twenty twenty-two. We had received a few comments during that stage, but those were all inquiries into what, why the signpost popped up at the. Willa Drive, not necessarily concerned about the parking lot or determining the actual discussion, so. Uh, so with that, um staff does, as I mentioned, recommend approval of this application. Uh, we feel that it is a unique situation, uh not found really anywhere else within the city. Uh, at least in this instance, and we feel that um it beats those criteria that needed for approval. So, with that, I don't have anything more, um like I mentioned, uh Sarah Roundhouse is here, uh representing Pilot Hill, the applicant. And that's all I have, thank you.
Okay, so we'll open up the commission questions to Derek, before we talk to the applicant. The um, the comments, uh silly.
Um, if, if a solar-powered, waterless and self-contained. Composting toilet was a more innovative. Uh, environmentally sound and a long-term cost-efficient option to a vault toilet, might that be considered?
Chair, Commission, I think, you know, specifically related to this variance, um. I don't know, I can really answer that, uh, you know, during the review process of the SSI that was associated with the variance. So as part of the site planning process, um I don't know if they looked at that, um I would say that. If they were to change that at some point, um they, there would be something that they could, you know, they could consider. Uh, I would probably maybe direct that question to the applicant if you wouldn't mind, Sharon.
Okay, alright, well, 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 we'll maybe, we'll, we'll do our questions and then she can come in. And talk to us, um, any other questions, silly? Um, you should, uh Jay?
Yeah, I do have a question, and Derek mentioned this probably is a question for you, and I don't know. Yeah, answer, but I was looking through the, the site plan, and on this one, there's a picture of the fence, and it has treated. It's treated lumber, and I was trying to figure out what type of material or what type of treatment is used for that, would that be a potential? And how that, that could reach out the, that fence post, and I didn't see any mention of it necessarily in the SSI either. Of the post, I mean, there's, there looks to be a perimeter fence and uh fences around each apartment, so it looks like there's. Fencing on this, and let him wrangle off that post, and uh, I don't know if it's an issue or not, but I. I would like to see it better.
Okay. Um.
Chair. That's something that we can ask for as kind of supplemental information for what type of. Treatment. Material they use, we, I know they used to use Creosote back in the day, I don't think they're doing that anymore, but.
Chair, Commission, I think, so, one, I would say, you know, specifically related to the variance. The treated lumber, like, isn't part of the variance request, however. We could, I don't, I don't recall being in the SSI either, I mean, I, I just, I don't recall it being in there, but I can't.
Yeah, I, I read through it earlier today.
Yeah, um.
See.
I mean, it'd be something that we, you know, I would be more than happy to bring it up to the, you know, to our uh environmental. Uh, the viewer and as well as the SSI, and just kind of just say like, should we be thoughtful of that? Because I think it's, I mean, all, I mean, there's a lot of fence, the whole perimeter is fence, and then you've got internal fencing, and so, um and. I would say too, maybe we ask the applicant, maybe they already have an idea of what they're gonna use, maybe it's not an issue, but I.
Okay, yeah, the product here is the Morgan Timber products, I even went out with their website and put pretty kind of. So maybe it's, maybe it's pretty innocuous, but without knowing what, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, I could, I could just track some information down and report that.
That'd be great.
Yeah, thank.
Any other questions, uh Donald?
How would uh, how did the applicant, Sarah, how did Sarah or the group come up with the recommendation of sixty-five? Parking spaces, has that ever been exceeded? Like, I know they had a meet there at last summer, there were awful lot of cars, but I didn't count them. So I'm just wondering, is sixty-five spaces enough, and how was that determined?
Chair, Commission, I think I will direct that question to the applicant, I think that could give you a better idea of how they came up with. How they want to organize the parking lot and like the size and things like that, maybe that's maybe.
Alright. Any, any other questions?
Uh, just a second question, is there likely to be a dust problem? It's filled with gravel.
I mean, any gravel parking lot's gonna have some dust, right? Um, we do have out there, yeah, the, the crusher fine trail that loops through the schoolyard and area. As well as, you know, it's limited ground cover out there already, if the wind blows, there's dust always, but. Uh, um, I mean, I, I don't know if they're planning on treating that, um typically in parking lots, they're doing some sort of treatment. Routinely, but, I mean, another question you could ask the applicant, see if they have a plan for that, maybe have one already, so.
Okay, I, I got just a couple of questions, uh. Is there a, a, a gravel standard from the standpoint of, of, of a, you know, base preparation? And thickness of gravel, and since we're not putting pavement on there, that there is some kind of a standard of what that gravel surface. Is going to, to consist of, because I mean, I'm concerned that um. You know, you're bringing buses in and, and you have, you start getting ruts, and it, it becomes, the surface becomes quite compromised. With, with you, with actual use, um and what the plan might be for. Regrading and regravelling, or whether that gets dealt with by a robust design of the, of the actual gravel.
Chair, Commission, so the city, because there's a, this is a variance request for a parking lot, but. Right now in the city, we only allow paid parking lots, so the city doesn't have a parking lot standard now. Most engineering firms and engineers will design a parking lot so that it can be maintained, it doesn't rot out, things like that. Um, you know, this project has been designed by an engineer, I don't know what this, all the specifics are, I don't have those. Like, if they have to like tell you how, you know, how much base they're putting in, things like that, uh. Another thing I would say I would point out though is that emergency vehicles still need to go through this site, as well as our. As trash trucks, because there's a, you're gonna have a solid waste, you know, enclosure in the back. And so, those vehicles are very heavy vehicles, and there's typically design standards based upon weight. Which are gonna be far more robust than what's needed for like your typical passenger vehicle and things like that. Because also too, that they're going to be on buses and the horse trailers, which also weigh a lot. You're gonna, you're gonna see a parking lot, it's probably gonna be.
Pretty, pretty heavily designed now. So does the engineering department re- review that, that the consultants, uh the engineers design? And say, yeah, this looks so robust enough?
No, we don't, uh, we, we back to the property owner, whether it's a paid parking lot. Or whether it's a gravel parking lot to design well enough to accommodate their design, and if it doesn't work. Then it's in violation, so if that parking lot doesn't function as a parking lot, it'll be in violation of the site plan. So then we could ask it to be repaired.
Doesn't function as a parking lot, was maybe it's. You know, the, I don't wanna say aesthetics, because that's not, but, um, you know, whether there's. There's issues with getting around because of ruts or compromises to that surface, I mean, who, who, who really zeros in on that and says you have to. You have to repair the, or maintain it, but, but once again.
I would say that it's gonna come from two, two areas of the city. One, from the planning office in terms of like, it's unused, it's not usable, but it's so badly maintained that you can't get vehicles in and out. People to our home street, right? Like, that would be, that's what you would see, or two, we can't get our emergency vehicles there if we have to. It's, it's that, you know, and, and that's, you know, through the site plan process, our fire department looks at it for, we. You know, travel, um, solid waste, they look at it to make sure that their, you know, trash truck doesn't sink in, you know, things like that, so.
So, so the, the fact that this is, you know, a sort of, a, a primitive parking lot by, by city standards. Um, it certainly would lend itself to modification and improvement and. You know, responding to actual usage and conditions, um in, in a fairly costly. Cost-effective way, and, and so that, that sort of, let's say in, in three years, it's, it's apparent that the parking lot really needs. Some work, well, do you have a sense, Derek, of what that process might be? Of how to give the applicant to, or whoever is responsible for it to take care of business?
Yeah, I mean, it, it would be pretty much what we would do for any site that doesn't meet the standards of what was approved. And so, we would send what we call as something, violation letter, and. That's a very generic letter, meaning that they're violating our zoning code or the codes that are. Under what are Title fifteen, and so for like this, like, let's say it's so bad, we would, we would send them a letter and then ask them to fix it, repair it. And we would go through a process that eventually it's either repaired, or we could take somebody to court eventually. Sue them essentially in civil, you know, civil court and proceed that direction. So.
Okay.
We, and we do that, I mean, we uh, we routinely deal with this with things like landscaping, uh signage, parking, building design. Um, just depends on the project, and we go through that, those steps that we would for enforcement, so.
This is true.
Yeah, yeah, Tom.
Probably being more familiar with gravel parking lots than most people, we crystal one, we have a direct orange. The parking lot seemed to hold together better than. The parking lot seemed to hold together better than the roads. If, if this was a gravel road, it'd be. Talking about it differently, but they still need maintenance. They, they, it's just. Nature of peace. You have to go in there once a year, sometimes twice a year if it's not too readily used and created. Because gravel is transitory, it'll move around away from the, away from the traffic, so. If it's uh, if it's not high speed traffic and it's just slow. Five, ten mile an hour parking, I don't, I think it'll last quite a while. If it's got a good base under. So, but like. You know, trying to design a parking lot through a city code where this is under city code, this ain't a parking lot. So. You know, it's no real basis to work, to work at, work with it. It's just that, you know, I assume they're gonna be maintaining it. They're gonna have to.
No, this is various, so. Just finding a sense of what, uh, where the. With key uh holes might be, so to speak, so. Um, what's my last question? So on the, the landscaping on the north and the west side, so there's gonna be trees planted? Do, do you have a sense of, of how they'll be watered?
They'll have irrigation.
Is there, is there a, a water supply out there?
Yes.
Well, if there's no further questions, then we'll hear from the applicant, Miss Matt. Miss uh Matthews. Thank you very much for coming and it's a great project. Thank you for your work.
Thank you, Chairman Moody and. Thank you, members. Oh, sorry. Thanks, Derek. Uh Chairman Moody and, and members of the commission, thank you so much for your time. I'm happy to be here and I really appreciate your thoughtful consideration of this. Trailhead. I always laugh when Derek calls it a parking lot because we always call it a trailhead. It's, it is unique and we recognize that we're asking a lot of the. Community to really facilitate the opportunity for us to. Make sure that we have a really safe and well-designed area where we can not only um. Allow people to gather and, and really enjoy the recreational uses of the Pilot Hill area. But we can also help divert. Problems from city streets where our guests are currently parking. Uh, we do know that there's some impact over on Forty Fifth and Crow for people. Um, parking in front of homes. We know that there's impact off of Boulder Drive and people parking. Um, yeah, on the streets and we really hope that this can help alleviate some of those, those problems. You asked some specific questions that I'm more than happy to try to answer for you. Sylvie, we did do quite a bit of research on the options for. Uh, different types of toilets and composting toilets is one that we looked at really carefully. The determination was that with our um. Climate here in Laramie and the numbers of users that we'd be having, that they just weren't practicable. Um, we really couldn't figure out a way to make that work and, and make it work for the size of groups that we anticipate. For special events and, and school groups, those types of things. Um, the other piece of it was having those uh bathrooms accessible year round. I'm the parent of, of two boys and I know that um. My biggest goal is to have them be able to, when they come off of a hike, immediately run to a bathroom. Instead of um trying to find a, a car to, to do their business behind, so. Um, we did look carefully at, at options and, and really found that the vault toilet was the best option. And so went to uh city council and through the process of. Uh, making sure that that would be possible. With um the timber that we'll be using, we really don't um anticipate Jake getting anything that would be harmful to the offer. Um, my understanding of the treated timber, and I don't know specifically what they use, but it more is a matter of. Drying the, the timber before it's turned into fence posts. Um, if they add additional treatment to it, I'm, I'm not really certain what that is and I can check into it for you. But my understanding is that it mostly is to make sure that those fence posts are durable and will um maintain a, a good. Finish over, over the years. So that we won't constantly be replacing. Uh, oaks and, and beans. The sixty five spaces, uh Donald, really came from um some advice that we got from some of our partners. We looked carefully at the numbers of spaces for different um similar areas in the region, Ty City, for instance. If people were to park correctly at Ty City, there would um be about fifty five to sixty. Um, parking spaces. Some of the other parking lots, we looked at, you know, spaces that they've uh set aside up. Uh, the Medicine Bow National Forest and at Kirk Gaddy State Park and. And so based on the size of the area that we had to work with in the plot. Uh, that the university has generously um allotted us. Um, we felt that sixty five spaces was, was a really good uh target for cars. We also wanted to be sure that we were setting aside a specific area within this um parking area for horse trailers that would not. Have cars, um also a lot of car traffic moving through there. Um, and then we did talk with the school district as well about uh school buses. And what their preference was as far as loading and unloading the students on school buses and. And how many average school buses would be um utilized for. School field trips. So that's where we, we ended up with the different um numbers that we came up with. Part of it too is just honestly how many cars would, would fit in the space and still be able to have horse trailer parking and, and bus parking. Um, I do anticipate that we'll have a, a. Really robust maintenance plan. I, I agree with you, Commissioner Mattmore. We anticipate that we'll probably need to grade it at least once a year and add additional gravel. Um, over time, um, at that point, we might also an- anticipate that we need to do some watering to make sure that we aren't creating. Um, additional problems with dust and, and blowing dirt in the area. But we feel like um due to the extensive drainage plan that was uh developed with Tri-Hydro. As one of our civil engineering partners in the, in site plan development that will have a pretty um. A, a, a pretty stable surface area. Um, I can't say there won't be running because there might be. Um, young kids that. Feel out and create a rut or choose to. Park in there when it's super muddy, but um. We'll do the best we can to make sure that we maintain the, the area so that it's really. Um, usable for the community and also is, is something that we can all be proud of. We do have water plant to the site that will be used for irrigating um drip, drip irrigation for all of the landscaping in there. Um, and we really want the landscaping to be reflective of what the community already has in place in a lot of our areas. Using a lot of native stone and, and um. Plants and bushes that not only are native to the area, that feed the wildlife. The birds and, and other um animals that live in the area. And we want it to be as attractive as, as most of our city parks. We want people to really. Um, come there with their families to have picnics, whether they go out for a walk on, on one of the trails or not. Um, we want them to really have it be a place that they're proud to show off. Uh, to visitors to our community. So. We're excited about the site plan and how it's working out. We feel like we um really. Did a lot of due diligence in hiring a firm that we're working with as the, the primary um partner in this. Uh, Russell Mills out of Fort Collins, who does a lot of design of. Uh, rural park spaces similar to this. And we just um appreciate your consideration of some of these. Variants requests that we really feel make this um applicable as a. Uh, parking and, and trailhead area for a. Uh, a rural uh recreation area like by the hill. Were there questions that I missed writing down that I didn't address?
I think you. You gave it up on, on what, what our discussion was.
Sylvie, it's very certain.
I, Sylvie, but um, but we'll, we'll entertain more, more questions um. Uh, at the moment, Sylvie.
Uh, you didn't miss anything and thank you. I appreciate the research of the different toilet systems. But in the context of the compost, composting toilet was, was solar power considered specifically?
No.
That, that does seem to uh be applicable to semi-arid cold climates like Laramie.
Sylvie, I, I understand it was and I understand that part of the concern was just. The capacity for the composting to occur with the numbers of, of visitors that we anticipate, even with solar assistance. Um, I, I can't answer that question specifically. I don't have my notes in front of me and I. Was only preferably part of that conversation, but. Uh, we do anticipate, right now, our trail counters are showing that. We have about a hundred and fifty thousand visits to the property annually. Um, and we know that a lot of those are. Are people that come every day and, and likely use the restroom at home before they get to the property, but. Uh, we wanted to make sure that as. Um, interest in the area grows and as different groups expand, um, events and races and things that. We don't end up with a situation where we're. Um, not able to, to manage the, the waste appropriately. I, I'm sorry, I, I can't answer it anymore and get than that and I. Uh, could try to do more research for you, but the. The decision that the board made. Um, was to go with a, a design by a company called Romtech. Which does also have some solar assist um to it that helps. Um, make sure that there aren't any um odors that are, are noticeable. So that the vault toilets are self-contained and, and really. Um, a positive experience for the users. I, I don't quite know where to look to look you in the eyes, so I apologize.
Thank you.
But I guess I should look at the owl. I apologize. I'm looking at you on the screen.
Any other questions from uh commission members?
I have a question. Will, will folks be able to continue to use other access points or will this be? Kind of a sole approved access point by the hill?
I don't think we could stop people from using other access points, um, quite honestly. I, I feel like. Our community, um, our local users will continue to use Boulder Drive and they'll continue to use Forty Fifth and Crow. Um, I think it's a little alleviate stress from large gatherings. Definitely any marketing that we do will direct people. Um, from out of town to, to the Willet Drive parking lot and. Just because there'll be a water fountain and they'll, we have a, a bike repair station and we'll have picnic tables in places. I think a lot of local Laramie users will also find it and, and discover that they like starting from that location. We've also um worked hard. We have a new universally accessible trail. That is um really easy to access from there to the south and another one. A little bit further away to the north. I think that especially for. Those of us that um wanna be able to recreate year round during the winter months, this will be a popular. Popular place for people.
Mr. Chair.
Yeah, Tom.
Not really on the berries, just. Uh, have you? Given any thought to more signage at Thirty and Willet?
We have and we actually are really hoping that um as. We get our trailhead established, that we'll be able to do a better job of communicating with people on how exactly to get there. We um initially put up a few signs with a really intent to make sure that we were protecting the Sherman Hill neighborhoods. And um. It's not called leading hills, the horses neighborhood. The neighborhood area. Thank you. Uh, where all the horse street names are, um, and get people at least far enough in on Grand, but we didn't wanna add additional visual clutter. Um, in a lot of places until we knew whether or not the trailhead would be located at Willet Drive. And also whether or not we might be able to collaborate with some of the city wayfinding signage um project. We're hopeful that we can um. Do that rather than add a lot of additional signage.
Very, very. There, there's still a baffling sign on, uh, on Grand. And directing people to Pilot Hill, but that's it.
But then it did, yes, it is. Well, there's a very small sign. At the corner of Thirty and Grand that tells you to turn um to the north. And then if you're at um Willet and Thirty and look up on the street like. You'll see another sign, but it's very hard to find. So yes, I agree that, that wayfinding signage needs a lot of work.
Any other questions from commissioners? Um. Okay, I, I got a couple of questions. So then energy, they're just general. Well, what's the amphitheater would be in that northeast corner?
Yeah, the amphitheater is actually really kind of a, a three or four. Stone step seats that um. Allow, it's, it's just curved shape, so it's, it's a mini classroom space.
Like an interpretive, uh, interpretive program?
Yeah, basically so that when your school groups are gathering, you can have the students all sitting on one side and looking at the teacher. Um, if, if she wants them facing toward the parking lot or on the other side looking at the property. Um, for whatever educational purposes. So really it's kind of a. Mini outdoor classroom space, but um it'll be out of stone and in a, a capital in shape.
That's nice. Thank you very much. Um. Could you describe what the, what the lease, the deed, your, you know, what the relationship there with UW on it, just providing that property and with the long term? Agreements is?
Yeah, with the University of Wyoming, we have um a, a long-term agreement. For all of the property that is part of the Pilot Hill area. So they own. Um, a full section, a half a section, a quarter section and another quarter section. And they wrapped um this additional. Parcel into the previous agreements that we already have at the University of Wyoming. We don't pay an annual lease fee with them. But we have a twenty-five year term agreement with the state, with the university. Um, and that allows us to have long-term. Um, a long-term planning vision for the property.
So for twenty-five years, it's all?
Yeah.
Okay. Very good. Um. How much interest do you get on, on the, the horse um? Trailer and use? I'm, I'm real. Yeah, I'm, I'm, you know, doubtful. I think there will be much, much horse. Use, but I don't, what, what's your impression of?
You know, the um WHMA is all non-motorized access as well as the, the remainder, the majority, all of. The Pilot Hill area. The WHMA, the Wildlife Habitat Management Area portion is three thousand acres. So when you're hunting in the WHMA, you have to pack out on horse or on your back. We do have more horseback riders in the WHMA certainly than in the Recreation Corridor, the other four thousand acres. But um, most of those horseback riders during hunting season access from the top of the property. Off of the forest service.
As, as, as opposed to here.
Yeah, yeah. Um, however. The University of Wyoming rodeo team rags up there quite a bit. We have a lot of the local riders that come out and, and ride up there. We have two members of our board that travel horses over and um currently park on, on either Willet or Worcester. To pack up there. I think as the horse corridor is better defined. Um, from the parking lot area and as um the word gets out, it'll be used more. But without really designated horse trailer parking, I agree with you. I don't think we're getting as much use. As we anticipate we will in the future. It's just kind of wondering if, like, you see that there's more, more need for parking spaces. Whether in the future, this, this. You know, within the sort of primitive design of this, whether there would be. You know, some adjustments to what, what the reality is. Uh, to accommodate more users. Yeah, and I think, I think that's a very fair question, Chairman Moody. I. I don't honestly know how we would address that, if we would try to expand this area or if we would consider other locations. When we looked at places for the primary trailhead, we really looked off of Grand Avenue, kind of across from Walmart. Um, in that area and there were some, no restricting problems in there, but that would be easy access for horseback riders. We looked off the Boulder Drive, at the end of Boulder Drive where the land was um. Excavated for addition to Walmart initially. Uh, because the Citeca overlay there is so minimal, that would be an extremely expensive. Place to put a parking lot. Um, we have to definitely pave it and also pave a, a ditch for runoff. And that's not very suitable for horses as well. Um, I think we could also possibly look at some access. Off of Forty Fifth and Crow, but we really are trying to avoid. Sending traffic through neighborhoods. So I'm not sure exactly what we would do. In our request to the Forest Service um for their long-range planning. Uh, with their non-motorized trails um up in the Full Mountain Unit of the Medicine Bow National Forest. We did request two areas for um parking that would allow for horse corrals. And I don't know if that will be approved or not, but it is something that we're thinking about um for the long-term vision.
Great, thank you. All right. Um, and I guess the la- last question and it is just. I, I just, I hope you have enough in your budget for maintenance for, for the service.
We hope so too. Yeah, it, it'll be interesting to see what the costs um end up being. We, we do feel like we. Um, have adequately met the needs of the cost of this project itself. And um we're grateful for the tremendous support that we get from the community to continue to. Support us financially and, and also with a lot of in, in-kind and pro bono work, so. Um, one way or another, we'll make it work.
Okay, good to hear. Any other questions from commissioners?
Can I ask if I have a question?
Sure. Uh, the, uh, is it a party that's behind our old party that's at the, at the end of Boulder Drive, that excavated area?
I didn't quite hear the beginning of your question.
Is, uh, is the level area that's excavated on the north side of? North side of Boulder Drive. And will that area continue to be, uh, non-accessible to traffic, to, to cars?
It's my understanding, yes. Uh, the city owns that property, that area that was excavated, um, and has blocked it off as a, awkward for protection area. And my understanding is that it's been the long-range plan, there's not a plan for that Boulder Drive or Forty Fifth to go through any longer.
Correct.
So, um, as far as I know, and I, I can't answer any further than what Pilot Hill would do, but.
So that'll remain as is?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, any other questions from commission? Seeing none?
Thank you very much.
Um, are there any questions from the public regarding this, this variance? Seeing, seeing none? Um, what, so any final, final comments from, from commissioners on this variance? Okay, parking areas. Yeah, all right. So is there a motion, um, on the floor? And whoever, whoever does it, go slowly, go slowly.
I'll, I'll move to approve the requested variance from the Laramie Minus Code. Fifteen dot fourteen dot zero four dot C dot one, parking lot access circulation. Fifteen dot fourteen dot zero four zero dot C dot three, servicing fifteen dot fourteen dot zero four zero dot C dot five, landscaping. Fifteen dot eighteen dot zero one zero dot eight dot three, roads joint development boundary. Fifteen dot fourteen dot zero five zero dot G dot one, parking lot perimeter landscaping.
The C. C dot.
Okay.
It's a G. Sorry.
You got two those.
You got two there.
Oh.
Yes.
I'm on fifteen dot fourteen dot zero dot five zero dot G dot two, general requirements. Fifteen dot fourteen dot zero dot five dot zero dot G dot four, parking area entries required. Fifteen dot fourteen dot zero five zero dot G dot five, internal landscape areas. Fifteen dot fourteen dot zero five zero dot G dot six, landscape items. Fifteen dot fourteen dot zero five zero dot G dot seven, terminal items. Fifteen dot fourteen dot zero five zero dot G dot eight. Curves for non-compliant parking lot in a LR slash APUC zone at the eastern end of Boulder Drive based on findings of fact, which is a law and subject to the recommended conditions. Shit, one through six.
Ryan, did you get it?
Did I miss any of those?
I think you got them all.
I think so. I bet you haven't said a fact.
You don't mean to die.
Is there a second?
Yeah, second.
Second from Matamore. Um, any final, any discussion from commission on this motion? Seeing none, we'll call vote please.
Dixon?
Aye.
Matamore?
Aye.
Wasool?
Aye.
Presto?
Aye.
Snyder?
Aye.
And Moody?
Aye.
That is six yeses, zero no, and one bad.
Motion, motion passing very good for, for variants. Um, is there a motion to adjourn, uh, Board of?
General.
I don't wish to adjourn. No, I'm going to clear a second. Second, Jake, uh, all in favor of adjournment, Board of Trustees, say aye.
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 We'll just go say nay. Okay, we are adjourned. Thank you, Sarah.
Thank you very.
Yes, thank you very much.